I don't have any questions.
Okay, well, I guess we've asked Mick to come to answer any questions or we've never really talked about since the election of what direction we're gonna go, what direction the board wants to go, what we want to do, what our options are. And we've certainly got some time to talk about that unless, I mean, it's one thing we can talk about, but if there's specific things that anybody's got any questions, please, now's the time to ask them.
Okay, I'll ask first question, and the contractor that built it, why was he chosen over St. Jen businesses, Dunsey's, Herzog's, when they were $300,000 cheaper? Would've been a bigger building. Where was he at on these problems with the floor cracking, the building repainting, and now the best windows or the windows need to be repaired?
Thought we were talking about a fire truck.
I mean, I guess we can talk about the building, but that board at that time approved, approved that contractor, and I guess, I don't know that that was...
Well, let me make sure I'm understanding Mr. Stupi correctly. If your question, question's directed at me, or are the board that approved that, you know, I don't...
Whoever wants to answer it.
I don't approve those things. All that, all that work back then was brought to the board, all those contracts, all the interviews and everything was done by the board back at that time.
Okay, then I'll ask the board, then. Why was the contractor chosen over Dunsey's when he was $300,000 cheaper, which would've paid for half the fire truck?
As far as I remember, they weren't cheap.
The design build.
They wanted a turnkey product.
No, they didn't, no, that is not, that is exactly not what the case was. The city was hiring a construction manager. And evidently, you don't understand what a construction manager is. And the Herzog folks and the Dunsey folks came in with turnkey bids as a proposal. So if I'm a Herzog or I'm a Dunsey, I come in and I have a certain bunch of folks that are gonna build this facility, and that's not what was wanted. A construction manager was hired by the city to manage the project. So each individual aspect, concrete, masonry, steel, all of that was bid out individually so that everybody in the community had an opportunity to bid on all of the work. Yeah. So if you're not understanding that, you need to go back and do some research on the difference between a turnkey project and a construction manager project. Well, the design bill is my understanding. Well, the construction manager had the design portion in his, in his work, yes. And as you said, and that's correct, that each, each individual part of it was bid out. That way, everybody, everybody that was in masonry got a shot at it, everybody in the community that had, that was electrical, got a shot at it.
That's correct.
They didn't have their subs that they used all the time.
That's absolutely correct.
His own subs and Herzog's. And it was my understanding, when you're using public funds, taxpayer funds, that that is the most beneficial, most fair way to do that at that time.
As a matter of fact, by going that direction, that local contractor, that business was used by those two contractors, got a portion of it.
Right.
Arnold Mason, or Arnold Masonry was, the one that did the masonry. They don't work with either one of the contractors on a regular basis, and they were able to get the contract with a little bid.
Right, that's a good example.
So was the floor broke because of the wall was not the wall they should've built? Too strong a wall? What caused the floor to crack?
Where is there a crack in the floor? We do not have a crack in the floor inside the building.
Okay.
There's one on the, there's no one on the apron, or somewhere outside, we got it.
The rumor that was flying at that time was that the building was settling and that there were cracks in the concrete. There are no cracks in the concrete inside the building. That's true. There are some cracks in the sidewalk.
I worked in concrete for a while when I was younger, and you're gonna get some cracks inside too. Concrete cracks.
Concrete cracks. Concrete cracks.
Well, yeah, you're a holiday, that's the only guarantee you've got.
It will crack.
It will.
Concrete will crack.
Now...
That's what he always said. You probably...
Here is the issue with the cracks outside, is that the only extra that we had for that building was to pour a foundation pad for the radio tower. And that pad is five feet thick and as big as you can see with the radio tower. So it's not going anywhere. Now, you will notice on the top of that foundation, there is some spalling that happens in concrete also. You don't get a decent penny sometimes, you'll get water under it, and you'll have some of that fine layer cracking, and it's called spalling. They poured that monolithically. They poured the pad, and they poured then the sidewalk that went to the building. I even questioned that back then because when I looked at it, I said, are you not using expansion joints in these places? And I was told, nobody uses expansion joints in them. Okay. So you have a couple of cracks around where the radio tower is, but nothing is structural, it's all cosmetic, and like you say, if you got concrete, you're gonna have a crack.
Okay, let's get to the truck, then. Had the vote passed, what was the plan for the old truck? To use it until the new truck came in, or what?
The old truck would've been taken out of service, as it was, taken out of service. Now, that question was asked, basically, and answered, Mr. Ross asked the question. What will ISO, what's their, what's gonna be their issue with that truck? And if you go on their website, and I haven't, I printed that, and printed it, and gave it to Mr. Ross and a couple of other ones who wanted it. If you have a change in your department that's gonna affect your ISO rating, and you contact the insurance service office, and they look at it and they're gonna, what they're gonna do is they're gonna say, okay, well, what is your plan? What are you gonna do? Well, if we would've contacted them before the election, we would've said, well, our plan is to go to the voters, and if they approve it, then we're gonna design and specify a truck and get it built. And it specifies in, on their website that if you have a plan and it's doable, they are gonna work with you, okay? So that was brought up to this board, you know, because the question was asked, well, what exactly is ISO gonna say? I can tell you what I think they're gonna say, from my experience in dealing with them and reading the research. It was determined that maybe it might be best that we don't get on their radar and say that this is what's gonna happen. So if, my opinion is that if the vote would've passed, we would've been able to tell those folks that, okay, the vote's passed, we still don't have a truck here, but we're gonna go through the design and specification period, get that truck ordered, get it built, and get it in service. What would've happened is you would've lost the current ladder truck for that period of time as far as service goes. What you would not have lost, and let me reiterate the fact that we still have not lost it, you would not have lost your ISO rating, your Class 4 ISO rating. So that's what would've happened, is that ISO would've worked with us to allow us to get through that period and get this truck back in service. Because ISO's really not all about, okay, if something goes wrong tomorrow, we're gonna ruin your rating today. They're all about working with you and the city and getting something worked out. Now, even though ISO knows about us right now, we have not lost our rating, and we will not lose our rating until they get us on the schedule to do another audit down here. When will that be? I don't have a clue. Could be tomorrow, could be next year.
Okay, what's the plan on the current truck, the way it sits?
That's your decision right now. For me, it's out of service. In my opinion, it's not safe to operate. The ladder truck is not, the ladder does not certify, the pump doesn't certify. So I can't afford to put people inside on a hand line and allow that pump to fail. I cannot allow people on that ladder, for that ladder to fail. I can't afford to be rescuing a victim and have that ladder fail. I can't afford to have that ladder up with nobody on it, and it fail and damage a building or fall on a power line. I don't, I, I won't accept that liability.
But the truck is designed as a tele squirt. It's not designed for someone to be on it, right? Is that...
No, that's not correct.
I thought that that's what was explained to me when I was out there, that you guys use it that way, but that is not actually what it is designed for.
A tele squirt was a, and Ken, correct me if I'm wrong here, you know, Ken works with a, with a full-time department. A tele squirt was designed back in...
They started using it in the late sixties.
In the late sixties. And they were a cheap version of a big standard ladder truck, okay? The people that were using those were using, were buying them primarily for a large water with, to deliver a large volume of water to upper stories. With the ladder on it, it did give them some reasonable rescue capability. They were not meant to be used as a conventional ladder, we would call it today. Now, with that truck being 31 years old, it, there are significant issues, as I've explained over the...
Did you use, and when the Hootop's house burnt down, did you guys use that when Hootop's house burnt down?
We used it as an elevated string. Nobody was on the ladder.
Does the frame have a crack in it?
The crack is not in the frame of the truck. The crack is in a, in a mounting portion where the body mounts to the frame, okay? So just like when you build a house, everything is integral with a house and integral with the structural stability of the house. That is one of the issues, that there is a crack between the body and the frame. The frame is not cracked, we never ever said that. That's been out there, that the frame is cracked, the frame is not cracked.
Just ask him.
I know, I know.
Appreciate you answering my questions.
If I could take that a little bit further, I'm not a very hard man to reach, okay? You live in the neighborhood where your firehouse is, if you, and we're open any Wednesday night, you wanna come by and look at cracks in the floor, or you wanna come by and crawl on a fire truck, you are more than welcome to, and I would be glad to have you.
Thank you for the invitation.
So what, what is the value of the truck as it sits?
I did some research on that. There is a, there is a, several magazines out, but one particular I get is called Truck Trader, and it's Truck Trader Fire Truck. I took the liberty of emailing three of the major used fire apparatus dealers in this, in this magazine, and said, here's what I have today. This is the specification of what's on the truck, pump capacity, the ladder, the whole thing. Now, today, I don't have a certified certification that the, on the ladder, and I don't, and the pump is fail, I don't have a pump certification. I said, what, what is the value of that truck? And I'll just recount what one person sent me back. He emailed me back right away, said, chief, we've seen these trucks go between $8,000 and $20,000. So I emailed him back, and I said, you mean, the shape it's in without a pump certification, without ladder certification, is between $8,000 and $20,000? Well, that's kind of a large spread. Is it more like eight, or is it more like 20? He emailed me right back, and he said, chief, I very much apologize. He says, my indication on price was that if you had a pump certified pump, and if you had a certification on the ladder, it would worth, be worth between $8,000 and $20,000, depending on all the others. Today, he said, I'm very sorry, but I wouldn't offer you anything for the truck.
Do the same thing with the records. Your dealers won't give you nothing for them. You gotta sell them outright.
Well, John, I don't see you driving 31-year-old records, there must be something to that, right?
My Model T.
Haven't seen it on the highway on the accidents I'm running. Maybe that's what we ought to do, bring this to the, the next cruiser event, classic cruiser event.
Only what it sounds like, we need to circle it and get rid of it.
That brings up another ball of wax that you guys need to think about too, is liability. If you sell that as a fire truck, knowing the problems it has, where does the liability lay in that too?
You sell it as it is?
Yeah, it's got scrap value, another dollar or something.
Right. And it's...
It's on where it is, as it is, and it's over with.
But in kind of the scheme of things, if it had any value, we need, we wanna calculate that into whatever, whatever we do.
As far as scrap value goes, it's got aluminum body on it. You know, I keep going, 6B is an 8B?
8B 92.
8B 92. Charlie knows, he can't find parts for those things. That motor in there probably is worth more in parts than it is in any, any other car dealership. But we can't, I, we're not gonna scrap it, we're not gonna pull it apart, then you end up on a pile of junk, but you're, you're correct, there could be some scrap value there. Now, here, here's, here's an issue that I wanna, wanna bring up too. This truck is only out of service because the fire department is not pushing it, and this board has not said, fix what's wrong with it.
That was gonna be my next question.
My question too, but I didn't wanna ask, I asked all the questions, thanks for asking that one.
We have estimates of about a little over $30,000 to fix what's wrong with the ladder and to fix what's wrong with the pump. Now, I'm gonna tell you, in my expert opinion, that's probably low.
And what about the crack?
That's fixing all of that stuff.
$30,000, you could put it back in service, you'd still have a 31-year-old truck.
I'm hedging my bet here. I'm saying 30 to 50. I'm gonna go on record.
You're gonna be like that other guy.
You're gonna pay $30,000 to $50,000 to fix that truck and get it back in service. That's not fixing everything that's wrong with it. And I would encourage you to come out, bring your towel and your soap and water, and I wanna put water through my, my elevated nozzle and close the nozzle off so you can take a shower at the end of the, at the end of the nozzle without any water going through it, because we have a significant issue there also. So if you wanna put $50,000 in a truck that's maybe not worth eight, that's up to this board also. So I personally wouldn't recommend it, but that's...
You're saying if you stick $30,000 in, you're only gonna get $8,000 to $20,000 out of it?
That's what the gentleman told me on the email. That's what, that's what he was suggesting, that he has seen trucks, and I'm, and I have these magazines, I can bring you.
If you give some certified.
Out of a 50-page magazine, you, you won't find any, you might, you might find two or three 1980-model trucks in there, because they're looking to sell, fire departments tend to get rid of their trucks in 10-year, 15, and 20-year increments, depending on what they're using, how they're using, and what their budgets are. So that's kind of what's in these magazines. Nobody wants a 30-year-old truck. But that's what this gentleman was telling me. In the condition you say it's in without seeing it, we know that these trucks have gone from about $8,000 to $20,000. So if you got one that looks brand-new, and works brand-new, and runs brand-new, maybe you get 10.
So is there any grants out there that can be applied for?
Yes, sir.
For Newman?
Absolutely.
And who does that?
I've done that for the past five years. For the past three years, I've used the assistance of grant writers, and trust me, they ain't gonna happen. A grant like that, and Ken can tell you, because I'm trying to push this to him, writing the assistance to firefighters grant takes me three months to do. And you have to understand, in this grant application, there's like $300 million in there. There was last year till sequester came up, I don't know what's in it. There was $300 million in this grant program. You, you would think that a poor little pod-up fire department like this ought to be able to pull a couple of hundred thousand out of there. No. There is $3 billion worth of requests for this grant application, for this grant program. So you have to understand, we, we don't run it as much as the folks over on the East Coast and things like that. There are thousands and thousands of fire departments in the same shape we are, looking for the same type of apparatus, and this is not $300 million for fire trucks. There's only a small portion of that. We got a grant when, '04?
'04 and '05, yeah.
'04 and '05, where we were able to buy turnout gear and air mask out of that, $70, almost, almost $100,000, because we had several vintage old turnout gear. So we have benefited from that grant, but we're not, I'm just telling you outright, we're not gonna get a grant for that truck.
Hey, I kind of, thinking about this, and it came up with, I don't know if these are our, our options or not, but it just kinda liked to go over what I think we've got to decide, or what this board has to decide to do. When it comes to the truck, first of all, we could do nothing, get rid of that, not spend any money, and just it'd end up being a, a different fire, a smaller fire department, so to say. And saying smaller, we'd still need the same amount of people, but we would just be with one less piece of equipment. That's certainly an option, and an option that you ought to consider. We could fix, I think the second option is to spend the $30,000 to $50,000 and fix it, and see how long it lasts, and buy us some time, maybe, and we put it off. That's, $30,000 to $50,000 is a lot less money than $6,000 to $800,000, and something that you could probably end up budgeting for if you wanted to. Three, you could put it off and wait for another board to decide it, when the, and everybody's, I mean, you're already starting to think about the, the end of the TIF coming up that's out, that part of town, it ends in December of 2015, which will free up some tax revenue. You could start maybe planning on using some of that money to do a lease purchase thing and end up using some of that, but that's gonna be 2015, you're talking about a different board to decide that. You could put that part off if you wanted to do that. Fourth, you could go back and ask for it again. There was, I mean, there was talk, there was actually, I think, somebody that even kinda got up and said to the board that maybe if it wasn't a permanent tax increase, that maybe a bond issue might've flown with the voters. I don't know. I know there's some of the issues that was talked about, certainly in that election, one of them, and I don't wanna make any light of the fact that I think we're, I don't want to combine these as being the same issue, but certainly that there would be a benefit, there is a benefit by, from some of the industries, mining industries mostly, that are in our fire tag zone, and wholesome being the other one, that we've agreed to offer and done training on, rescue out there, that that type, that piece of equipment would be, could be very beneficial to those industries. And what part were those industries gonna play, or play in the purchase of this? It was certainly something that was brought up during the whole election. One thought is, maybe we go to those people upfront, see what they were willing to, if they're willing to give us $10, if they're willing to give us $10,000, or $100,000, or $200,000, I don't know. And see if, if, what it's worth to them. Certainly a benefit to them, there's no question about that, and the amount of time that our volunteers have spent training on those issues, I guess, you know, we got seven of them here tonight, it would be, I mean, it just sounds like it'd be common sense that if you had that type of truck, that a lot of the issues that you'd end up dealing with in those industries, that piece of equipment would definitely be beneficial than, more beneficial than not having it, correct? I mean...
Industry is, is, business and industry is, is odd fella. If, it's like anything, if you don't have it, are you gonna miss it? The problem with the fire department we have as a whole, and I'm not in, in discounting industry, just looking at our community, it's really a what-if scenario. If we never burn down our city square, we'll never need a ladder truck. If we never have an issue in the top of one of our school buildings, never need a, never need a fire, a ladder truck. So would they be amenable to a request like that? They have been very generous in the past, and I'm not just talking about Mississippi line, I'm talking about the other ones, but someone has to go ask them.
Right, and as I said to begin with, I don't want to connect those two issues, just what you're talking about. I don't wanna connect of, of the benefit that it would have within the city limits versus the benefit it would have in those places. You, you obviously have taller structures in those particular businesses that something like that, I would, only common sense would say would be more beneficial and advantageous to those, to those people.
Agreed totally.
I mean, versus you go, just going out and buying a, a normal pump or a fire truck, that would be more beneficial.
And that is, that is an option that you can put on the table too, if you don't want a ladder truck in this community. But in all of your scenarios, Mayor, all of them come with some sort of caveats and some sort of discussion. What if one of your apparatus that you have today goes down for some reason? What if we blow a pump? What if we blow a load? What if we have an accident? Then what do you do? Today, and it will continue to be this way, if we have a fire in our rural jurisdiction, I have to take both of those trucks out. That's how we fight fire. I'm not taking one truck out and leaving another truck in the city. That's an ISO issue, and you get whacked on your point system because now you don't have an apparatus in the city.
Didn't you just say that that was not in service?
No, I'm saying, I'm, yes, you're correct, it's not in service. I'm saying, today, if I have a fire in a rural area, I'm taking the two pumpers I have currently in service, I'm taking them to the rural firefight. Now, when we had the ladder truck in service, because you don't have fire load that necessary for, for a ladder truck in a rural community, that truck stayed in town, and you've got good points as protection in your city for that truck being available in the city while, and they understand that we have rural jurisdictions. Same way in the city. If we've got both of those apparatus working in the city on a fire, and you have a rural call, I have mutual aid departments, but they're 15, 20 minutes to respond to one of my structure fires in my rural area. Does the city accept some liability there for not, I don't know, there's, there's a lot of different... There's a lot of different caveats on all those, all of those things. I'm saying there needs some discussion about some pros and cons as to what...
Right. And if we did nothing, then we wouldn't be any worse off than we were ten years ago? Or before you had the ladder truck?
I would have to disagree with that, but...
Well, I mean, you're less one piece of equipment, you're just less one...
Thirty years ago.
Okay.
You wouldn't be any worse off than you were thirty years ago.
Well...
Because that's when this board decided to have three apparatus.
Okay, okay. Well, before you had it, you wouldn't be in...
Yeah, but I still disagree. Ancient history, Mayor.
All right.
Sorry.
So I, and if somebody's got any other options that we can consider, I would be more than, I don't know what they are. It's certainly the money, as everybody sitting here well knows, it's not in this budget, it's not next year's budget, and it's not gonna be in the budget the year after that. And we've got streets to definitely deal with as a, as a big priority, probably the top priority. And so...
I guess, Mayor, would you consider a fire committee or an equipment committee? I mean, you got a sidewalk and tree committee and every other committee.
Sure.
Would you consider some business people in town that's interested? Because...
You mean to come up with ideas?
They don't want to go to wholesome and whatnot, so maybe let this committee start figuring out what they need or what they think, or with the chief, and maybe start weighing some options out of what they would donate or what.
That's fine. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed myself to go into asking those businesses with somebody, you know, and asking them to see where we stand if they're interested.
It's two things here. One is, I think it's important for people other than the firefighters to be part of the process, and that will lend, I think, a great deal of legitimacy to the discussion with business and industry. But you also need the expertise of the firefighters, because they're the ones who can answer the questions that people will put to you. So you, obviously, if you form a committee, you can't, can't leave the most knowledgeable element off the committee. It's gotta be a combination.
Well, a combination of everything, but they can sit down and figure out, one, do you want to try fixing it? Two, do you want a fire truck or a hooking? I mean, there's so many things to weigh out there.
I don't, sure. I don't, I mean, it's, it's either that or you...
A lot of them said, different ones said they'd like to be on a committee, so I brought it up.
All right. It's either that or, you know, it's either that or you ate is the committee.
Yeah.
Well, there's, I think there needs to be some caveat here. If you're gonna form a committee just to do headhunting, then don't form a committee. If you're, want to form a committee and to move forward with this city and their fire protection, then that's a good idea.
Well, I think that's what John was getting at. I don't think you're headhunting.
No.
We just, we just need to start the ball rolling.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna be honest with you right now, the people want yous to work with them if they're gonna come on and not everybody but heads. I mean, there's gotta be some common ground somewhere.
Can't agree with you more. John, if you give me a few of those people, we'll gladly, we'll get something going right away. That's it, that's, if we get everybody to buy into it, it's gonna be a lot easier, so... Any other...
So what's the plan, Mayor?
Well, he gonna get me some names?
And then?
And then we'll get some people off the fire department and a few people off the board, and does that sound like plan?
Hypothetically, say a truck costs six hundred thousand, I'm just throwing a number out here. Say you got a committee together and you raised two hundred thousand, where's the other four gonna come from?
Well, I, again, I think that's, that decision at that point, would it be...
Well, I think the committee would be to raise money. The committee would be to formulate a plan as to the needs, correct?
Charlie, I think one thing that that would answer would be the naysayers that said that, of the point that I brought up is, well, is it, how much is it benefiting the city that we have this, and how much is it benefiting these people that are outside the city? If they buy into the project, so to say, I think you have a lot better chance of selling it to the rest of the community who's gonna end up having to pay for it and say, well, okay, these guys aren't buying in and they're paying their share, they're paying a good share of it, you know, I'll go along with it. So it would, I think it would just be a good PR thing and a good thing that that could happen. And I don't know what's done, but it would, I certainly hope it would, I think it would help sell the cause. And then we're, you know, depending upon how much that might be, would obviously affect kind of a bond issue and how long you'd have to go out for it or...
While you're thinking about that, one of the pumpers turns twenty this year. So that truck will be thirty years old, ten years.
Mm-hmm.
Takes a year to build it, six to eight months to plan for it. So big picture, long-term. I know this might not be that current board, but I plan on still being on the department then and live in this community. So it matters to me.
You said you were gonna have other people on the department on your committee. You know how many hours that we give you guys?
Already?
Already, from being back from a family, ball game, stuff like that?
You volunteer, that's a volunteer.
That's right, we're volunteers. That's right.
That's a volunteer, Tim.
Yes, volunteer. Do you want to come down and join the department?
We'd love to have you. I got three spots open.
We gotta start somewhere, the first one to go through, so...
We did ninety-nine percent of the work for trying to get the tax passed. I had members on the board against it.
No, I, hey, I don't think anybody was totally against it, it was forever tax. I'm not against you guys getting new equipment. You said John gets new equipment. I'm told about the last three or four years, you had old trucks.
I paid for it, though.
Yeah, you, yeah, you...
Yeah, I'm a taxidermist.
You're in business, uh...
Well, if, if this is the beginning to an end, then that, I think that's the direction that we ought to go. And yeah, it's gonna take some more, some of, one of your twenty-something or a couple of the twenty-something people that you got, some more of their time. But if we can end up getting what we want out of this thing, then with everybody's cooperation, I think it's worth trying.
One caveat, I'd be very careful when I approach local businesses. I'd approach it out of goodwill, because in my thirteen years here, that truck has not made it, it's not been used on a call in Mississippi line. It's not been needed.
And that's back to what Vic was saying, if you, if you can anticipate that you will never need it, it's the end of the...
But if you can convince them that they might, is the other issue.
Most of the structures I've, that are up high are steel. It's actually used more on structure fires, and I, I mean, there's, I started to make a comment, probably involve a name, and I'm not gonna do that, but there's, there's been, you know, they use more on structure fires in this town than anywhere else.
Now, the caveat you have with industry is the potential for rescue. Now, I don't know anybody that's gonna sit here and say, no, you shouldn't have gone out to this industry or that industry to rescue someone from a height that that truck could potentially. So there is the potential, very much the potential, that that truck can help industry.
Well, I mean, they're gonna do a cost-benefit assessment.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, it's, it's hard to do that, but I, what, I just, my point is, I wouldn't approach a business and not activate a business.
I do understand.
Outside the cell phone, say, look, you need to pay your share, okay? Well, we haven't used them thirteen years, what is our share?
I understand.
So, I mean, I'd be careful of that, because, you know, I think goodwill, I think most of these companies are more than willing to help out.
Understand.
They don't need a cost-benefit analysis to make a contribution.
That's not a cost...
Absolutely.
But they're not likely to give much, or as much. They're not gonna say they find some benefit for it, they can calculate the benefit.
Correct.
And I, you can get back to that, what you've done in the past couple of years with the training that you've gone through, volunteered to go through, and the amount of time that you've spent on your own taking that training so that you can do those kind of rescues out there, that's worth something, and it's, it should be worth something to them. And, you know, if, if we weren't involved so much with them already in those kinds of things, it might be a little bit a different story. But you've, you've taken the step to try to make sure that their people end up being safe. Okay, guys, what about helping us out?
And I believe you're gonna have as good an opportunity convincing industry to come on board. With what, I don't know. Somebody's gonna have to ask that. But I felt like some of the biggest issues that we had in the last election is that we had a contingent out there that was telling the general public that we were lying to them. So I would very much agree with having a committee if they are coming on board with an open mind and saying, what do we need? And answer questions like Mr. Stupi had tonight, and I thought, and I hope I answered your questions. If not, please come by, and we'll discuss this more. But it, I would hope that this committee would understand that if they come to the conclusion that, yes, we need a fire truck, or yes, we need a ladder truck, that they would be out there to campaign for. Because I think the contingent last time, and I thought my guys did as good a job as they could do, but you get somebody out there that says that, those guys are lying to you, and you don't have any other recourse to come in, because we're, we're not hiding Anybody wants to come down through here and see finances, they can come in here anytime, the day or not, not night, but, and look at, at budgets. The firehouse is open on Wednesday night, they can come through there anytime they want. We welcome those folks to come through, ask any questions. I really think we would very much enjoy explaining fire department business to folks in this community, to a contingent of people, and getting them on board. I think that'd be...
Maybe we got one or two new members out.
Okay. Any, anything else? Martin, you got anything else? Anybody else?
I noticed that we have, I'm sorry. What kind of timeframe we're looking at? We need to get, I think we need to move as quickly.
Yeah, I think in the next two weeks, we come up with people and, and maybe by next, by the next meeting, we're gonna be able to come up with what we think. Have a few names, we don't, we need more than five or six people.
Well, I know, and to that point, I know that we have media here, and I'm sure he's maybe jotting a few notes down.
Absolutely.
But, I mean, I would suggest that a plea go out and maybe his oratorical that we would love to have folks. Get ahold of me, get ahold of you, get ahold of John, Carl, or Don, or Miss Zerwick.
Seven people, or seven people? You have a long line, because people want to try.
Actually, the bigger the better. We got, we have, we have a very nice training facility, we can...
Any guns? Make a break?
Any other business? No other business?
Can we talk about sidewalks?
I got one thing.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks, yeah.
Yeah, sure. We can talk about sidewalks. We can get out of your way. Thanks, John.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, thanks again for...
Trying to figure out a cheap way on sidewalks. Do you have any suggestions?
Cheap way on sidewalks?
Yeah. I'm sorry, let, I'm sorry, can we start sidewalks? Cheap way, I wanna put a sidewalk in front of my house.
Right.
But I got people all the way up going towards 61, wanna join in on bandwagon.
If you don't, you have to walk to the right side.
Right.
You'll make it three and a half foot.
I know, but I'm just asking about some up, up through there.
A foot, that's a hundred dollars a yard.
Well, no, within a foot.
A running foot.
How much is that in concrete?
Well, you have to figure out, you know, it's gonna be four inches thick by three feet wide. And, and so you gotta figure out how many feet a cubic yard will go when you're only four, four inches thick and three feet wide. Of course, the three feet is one of those yards.
I mean, I guess what I'm, and I ain't afraid to put it out there. I think they're talking about fifteen thousand dollars in front of my house. And I think, what will the city pay?
How many feet is?
Four thousand.
How, how much fundage do you have?
I don't remember, I don't have the paper here in front of me, but...
You probably got a hundred feet or whatever.
But I'm leading up, people's done already calling, and, but when I tell them that, they're kind of, oh, I didn't know whether we could figure out some cheaper way. I mean, I guess our employees can't pour that, or, I mean, I'm just asking, I'm trying to figure out a cheap way, because people are, I don't know if they're calling you, but, but people's calling up on Marcus Street that they'd like to see a sidewalk.
Seymour sidewalk?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we need it, man.
And people on the opposite side of the street, a few of them said they would, you would sit in all that, but...
But right now, if you got a sidewalk, and we determined, you determined, that it's deficient, we're supposed to send a notice to property deficiency and order them to fix it, and then give them three dollars and fifty cents a foot towards it. Yeah, that's what the code calls for.
What about, uh...
Yeah, but...
I don't think it's ever been done.
What about everybody at John's house? Ain't, ain't, not in Missouri Natural Gas supposed to fix it?
Yeah, that's the one there, yeah.
Many years ago.
And then I guess my next question is, if people start getting on the bandwagon, do we have money in the budget for that? No? Maybe we need to look in? I mean...
It's in our, you know, our money in that kind of thing is public work budget, and it's spent for one thing or another, but we didn't anticipate sidewalk repair.
Right. I understand, but I'm just saying, if people start getting on the bandwagon and want the third, we don't have the time.
Have a flood of people all of a sudden.
I don't know.
Never know.
Starting to be a lot of phone calls, so I don't want the employees to try to work.
How do you force a citizen to fix a sidewalk that the city put in? I mean, a long time ago, they put...
Who put them in?
Who put them in?
Who put sidewalks in?
Property owners.
Sometimes the property owners. All the way on 4th Street, the property owner, those sidewalks?
Usually property owners. It's up to me.
Today, if you want to...
But the thing is, is that you've always told that the sidewalk is half the city's and half the property owners. But now, if, if a property owner fixes that sidewalk and then somebody falls on it, then the property owners lie on the fire.
We, we have a general, or all public, so even though the sidewalk is technically owned by the city, if it's not properly maintained, somebody calls, even though the sidewalk may not have, even be on a property, technically. But private property owners cannot so get sued. So the dual obligation of...
But what I was thinking, I mean, was that the city utilized the private property owners to put sidewalks on it, and then that's where it came, has the property owner owned half the sidewalk, causing the...
And they never have, but maybe...
I understand what you're saying. That's a fact.
Like the city came to the property owners and said we want to put sidewalks in, a long time ago, I'm not talking like, well, before me, and then they took...
Did you get a chance to look at that property out there in point base?
From the property owners and then put sidewalks?
Okay.
Good evening. A little call, Pam?
Mayor Grumacher?
Here.
Alderman Couch? Alderwoman Zerwick?
Here.
Alderman John Stupi?
Here.
Alderman Jokers?
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Here.
Alderman Okenthus?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brinkfield?
Here.
Alderman Ross? Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second, third, fourth.
All in favor? Go right into the city administrators' report.
Okay, I reported at our last meeting about the new sign...
We took pictures, and somebody took pictures and sent them to me. And so I sent them off to the railroad and said, "You know, you gotta do something." The guy called me and said, "I'm on it, I'm on it, you know, we've just gotta get Burlington Northern here." So we're supposed to be organizing a meeting next week with all groups, parties involved, and see if, but he's organizing it, and he's gonna call me on the date we're gonna have it, and see if we can't, once and for all, get this, this resolved. I think we have Mississippi Lime to thank for finally getting them off the center, because it was when a customer complained that they decided they needed to do something about it. They weren't very responsive to me for the last two years. Mayor and I met with the Corps of Engineers, we talked about that, and the cost of completing the final report is twenty-seven thousand dollars, cheaper than we thought it was gonna be, because we were adding some things that were already included. And we talked about some of the work elements, we talked about detention down the creek, we talked about some of the elements, and they're gonna do some work, they didn't know if we, we're wondering, do you have to completely reroute the road, or can you just reroute it around the dam? And if you don't have to do the whole road, what's the effect that would have on the cost of detention? And, and they're gonna go back and look at all of those things, so we're gonna kinda hear back from them. And then finally, we, the new congressman, Jason Smith, was in town, and the mayor and I had the opportunity to meet with him. We talked, he seemed supportive of the National Park Study. He was concerned that it be a citizen initiative, because he had some experience with another national park that the citizens opposed, and they went ahead and created it anyway. So I assured him that this was one that would have the citizen's support. And coincidentally, after that meeting, we got an email from Shirley Miles that I've, Sharon Miles, that I've, I've put in there. And since then, she's had another email, and it looks like their travel restrictions are being lifted. So they're gonna be able to complete the report and start having public hearings within, within the next sixty days. So that process will move forward. Any questions?
Greg, one of the reports, Steve, you're the only one on the agenda tonight. Oh, we'll take the old guy.
Steve promoted me tonight. We just wanted to give a quick update. Chris Boone, he's the president of Cochrane Engineering Firms here with us tonight. We, we met with him, we've been going over some potential projects for the city, some things in, that were budgeted items, some of these were, and, and what we've done is, we've identified what we think as the top six priority water lines that need to be replaced. Basically, the asbestos pipes was the ones that we prioritized, and, of course, it's not all of them, but we picked the top six out. Chris is gonna be working on some cost estimates and some things like that to present back to you guys at a work session. We just wanted you to be aware that we were, we're working on this, have some options for you to decide whether you wanna do them or not in the very near future. But it's gonna be maybe an hour or so to talk about it, I'd say, in that range, when it comes time. So it needs to be done at a work session where we can think it out clearly. But I wanted to make sure you all got to get a face with, with Cochrane. He is the engineer that was selected for the, for the project, as, when we sent the RFQs out a few months ago, so. Any questions?
He's gonna be roaming around town?
Yeah, they've been, they've been...
Putting quite a bit of time in town recently, looking at the roads and, and, you know, the streets, see where we can move water lines, and get them out of the streets or in the streets, if we do the project. So...
Is Ninth Street one of the areas that we have questions with that one?
I believe, I believe Ninth Street was in the top six.
Yeah.
So, and, and when we have our work session meeting, we might change that top six, based off of some information you all have. But as of right now, we, we've selected six for you all to review in a, in a work session.
When you have a warming issue, break, or whatever, usually it's that type of...
Yes, everybody who's seen us out working on St. Mary's Road, and, and where you just spoke about the flooding out on, on, up there, those are, you see us out there digging a lot. And so, how we determined the top six wasn't just from O and M cost, but it's water quality issues, disruption of customer services, I mean, all these, they have a lot of lines that need to be replaced at some point, but, you know, we, we had to prioritize them. And so, Martin, city administrator, myself, Steve, Chris Boone with Cochrane, we, we've discussed it, and I think we're really close to being, being able to present it to you guys, if you could select a time for a work session, so. Any other questions?
Great. Thanks for coming, Chris. Thank you.
Just in case you, it sounds like you may have some information I could use. Feel free to call me, and, you guys know your streets, we're ready.
If, if we get the information finished, then I think, I think we won't have any problem doing that. Would you wanna have a work session before our meeting in two weeks?
Should you guys be ready?
Sure.
Any committee reports? Anybody? Okay, at this time, it being 7:10, we'll open a public hearing. The Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing to consider the approval of Fitzgerald subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot 22, and parts of Lots 20, 21, and 23, in Block 3 of the International Addition to the City of St. Genevieve, otherwise known as 507 Monroe Street. Comment, Brenda? Would you like to first?
I have a larger plaque here, if you can look at it. Let me see that. Little smaller that we probably call you.
That's the same one that everybody's got in her pocket, right? Yeah.
Yes, it's just larger. What this is, is that Fitzgerald's originally purchased three lots, and made them into, and made them into one lot, or is that two lots? Two lots, I'm sorry. Two lots, made them into one lot. And what they would like to do is subdivide them back into the original two lots, with shifting over just a bit on the vacant side, to give their neighbor twenty foot of that property. The frontage will remain the same, it's sixty foot across, which is less than what the current zoning regulations call for, but this is a subdivision of record, meaning that it was construction, constructed prior to the zoning regulations, and the majority of the lots are sixty foot across. The lots will still need the minimum requirements for square footage. And should they wish to build on it, they will be able to maintain all the required setbacks.
And the neighbors, getting added to his lot allows him to construct a garage within the setbacks with the variance?
Correct. He recently received a variance from Board of Adjustment to build one foot off of the side property line between the two, two lots. Any questions?
What is the, the, I guess, the frontage now, as far as our regulation says?
Eighty foot.
Eight, just curious.
No more questions? Okay, so, we'll close the public hearing at 7:13, and I believe that's on the agenda for tomorrow to address.
I'd like to point out, we have a request from the property owners for two readings when it comes up.
Yes, I wanted to add to that, that the owners did request, submit a request to hear both readings tonight, if possible. This is Mrs. Fitzgerald, and Mrs. Literus, who have an interest in also, they are obtaining a piece of that property.
The neighbors there?
Yes.
We haven't had any issues with them yet, the neighbors?
No, they have not received any responses.
We'll get to the, for the honor of the agenda, so, don't, don't run away, we'll get there. Okay, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, Agenda 27.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, and approval of the minutes of a closed session on Agenda 27.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, Resolution Number 2013-27, a resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the public water supply of St. Genevieve County, Missouri. Explain that?
Yeah, the, we have two places where our systems connect, and the Public Water Supply District has just asked that we formalize our agreement that if they have a problem, they can use our water, if we have a problem, we can use their water. The city attorney has reviewed the agreement and approved it as deformed. The water staff has informed me that is, it's a, it's kind of in place now, but it's a desirable arrangement that we have with them, so you can consider it with that knowledge.
Blue approval.
Second.
Question. Where are the two places, at the Y?
At the triangle, and up by the nursing home.
Nursing home.
River.
The River View.
By the park.
Park.
Thank you.
Terry, is this something that goes on in other communities?
Yes, I'm just curious. It's, it's something that DNR kinda likes to see, actually, I mean, it's, it's kinda like you guys volunteering to take your fire truck to another town if they got a fire. You, you, you leave the valve shut unless somebody's gonna be out of water, unless there's an emergency, and if there's something maintenance-wise or something, then you get together and you, you open the valves up. There's a way to flush the lines out and stuff there. It's, it's a good idea, and, and I, I mean, it's been there since 1995, the city's benefited from it in the past, because they, they done it when, when the wells flooded back then. I don't know, very rarely will it be used, but it's there in case of emergency.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. Resolution 2013-28, a resolution reappointing Lorraine Stang to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. Old Business Bill Number 3927, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2013 Budget relating to the Cemetery Fund Number 27.
Blue approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Okenthus?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brinkfield? Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3927 now becomes Ordinance 3868.
Okay, thank you. Bill Number 3928, second reading.
An ordinance approving change order number three, in the amount of seven thousand, one dollar and twenty-five cents, and a final contract amount of a hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents on the contract with CE Contracting Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the St. Genevieve Safe Routes to School Project.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Brinkfield?
Yes.
Alderman Okenthus?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3928 now becomes Ordinance 3869.
Okay, thank you. New Business Bill Number 3929, first reading.
An ordinance accepting and approving the plat of Fitzgerald subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot 22, and parts of Lots 20, 21, and 23, in Block 3 of the International Addition to the City of St. Genevieve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Second, third. All in favor, second reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, Bill Number 3929.
An ordinance accepting and approving the plat of Fitzgerald subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot 22, and parts of Lots 20, 21, and 23, in Block 3 of the International Addition to the City of St. Genevieve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Move first.
Second, third. All in favor, second reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, Bill Number 3929.
An ordinance accepting and approving the plat of Fitzgerald subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot 22, and parts of Lots 20, 21, and 23, in Block 3 of the International Addition to the City of St. Genevieve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Move first.
Second, third. All in favor, second reading?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, second reading, Bill Number 3929.
An ordinance accepting and approving the plat of Fitzgerald subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot 22, and parts of Lots 20, 21, and 23, in Block 3 of the International Addition to the City of St. Genevieve.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Okenthus?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brinkfield? Yes. Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3929 now becomes Ordinance 3870.
Okay, thank you. Uh, geez, short me. Thank you all for coming.
Licenses?
Yeah, well, we got any public...
You leave the valve shut unless somebody's gonna be out of water, unless there's an emergency. And if there's something maintenance-wise or something, then you get together and you open the valves up. There's a way to flush the lines out and stuff there. It's a good idea. And I, I mean, it's been there since 1995. The city's benefited from it in the past, because they've done it when the wells flooded back then. I don't, very rarely will it be used, but it's there in case of an emergency.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Proposed. Thank you. Resolution 2013-28, a resolution reappointing Moran Stang to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Proposed. Thank you. Old business, Bill number 3927, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2013 budget relating to the cemetery fund number 27.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Zerwig.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Okunfus.
Yes.
Alderwoman Brimfield.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 3927 now becomes ordinance 3868.
Okay, thank you. Bill number 3928, second reading.
An ordinance approving change order number three in the amount of $7,001.25 and a fine contract amount of $180,675.25 on the contract with CE Contracting Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the St. Genevieve Safe Routes to School Project. Alderwoman Brimfield.
Yes.
Alderman Okunfus.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 3928 now becomes ordinance 3869.
Okay, thank you. New business, bill number 3929, first reading.
An ordinance accepting and approving the plat of Fitzgerald subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot 22 and parts of Lots 20, 21, and 23 in Block 3 of the International Addition to the city of St. Genevieve. Move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Proposed.
Move first.
Second. Third. All in favor, second reading? Aye. Opposed? Okay, second reading, bill number 3929.
An ordinance accepting and approving the plat of Fitzgerald subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot 22 and parts of Lots 20, 21, and 23 in Block 3 of the International Addition to the city of St. Genevieve. Move to approve.
Roll call.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Carl Okunfus.
Yes.
Alderman...
You're brain freezing.
Alderwoman Brimfield.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 3929 now becomes ordinance 3870.
Okay, thank you. Too short me. Thank you all for coming.
Liquor license?
Yeah. Well, we got any public comments? Anybody? Okay, other business, we got approval of temporary liquor license request for the Knights of Columbus for August 10th and 11th, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's for down on Main Street. It's not at the Casey Hall.
You're only going to six, though, Don?
Pardon?
You, you, does, you got from 10 on Saturday, you got from 10 to six. You sure you don't wanna make that to eight?
Paul Arnold's in charge of it, so I'm not sure if he was aware. Have they increased it this year till later, or has there been eight in the past?
It's been eight the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah, just in case.
You can still close it at six.
Yeah, you can close at six. Well, let's just approve it for eight. How about Kim?
No.
I don't know. We're gonna go for that.
Only if it's free.
Okay, so we're gonna, so it's changed, it's changed to eight. So, okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Other business item. I told Eric I'd bring this up during my report, and I failed to do so, so I'm gonna bring it up now under other business. And so here he comes to tell you what it is.
I'm going to attempt to introduce a request for an ordinance that I'm hoping to get in place by JURDAFET, which will kind of close a gap that we've had for some time in our criminal ordinances. It will be, I believe, titled as a disorderly conduct, but it'll cover some of the issues that we addressed during JURDAFET and also the county fair. Urinating in public, public fighting, failing to disperse during a fight. Sometimes we have some issues trying to get to the fight because there's so many people. So there are several elements to the, to the ordinance, but it will, it will just kind of encompass a lot of the issues that we have and actually be a little bit more of an appropriate charge. We've addressed it with our city attorney and also our city judge, and they're both in favor. So just wanted to kind of make you aware before you got the piece of paper in your packet for next, next meeting. We're hoping to have that ready for the next, the next meeting. I believe there will be two meetings between that and JURDAFET, because it's the 10th, so that'll be the second Thursday.
Do we wanna do a double reading on it?
At the time, you can decide.
Yeah. I believe there will be two before it, so we didn't wanna try to rush it through for the fair.
Didn't wanna hit you cold with this, like, new thing.
Exactly. So...
He came to me, I said, I was kind of like surprised that it wasn't already there.
Right. And most cities do, and we kind of took a lot of our guidance from Farmington's ordinance on it, with the exception of like the urinating in public, which we will add to it. But just to make you guys aware, I appreciate your time. You guys have any questions?
Is there an ordinance for having a trailer parked on a city street?
If it is licensed, no. If it restricts the width more than 10-foot clearance in the roadway, then yes. But as long as it is licensed, I know that they have frowned upon setting a trailer out on the street to sell before, but as long as it's licensed and insured, or not insured, but up to date, it's not an expired license or setting there unlicensed, it can sit on the street.
Now, when, even when they are licensed and, or if they sit there for weeks at a time, well, we can't make them move it, but we do encourage them to.
Right.
And you're saying for more than a week?
Really, whenever somebody is put out enough that they would like to...
The lady has a problem with the next door neighbor to them, when she backs up, she's got that trailer wagon that's full of furniture or whatever, it's covered up.
Okay.
She's afraid somebody's gonna be walking up the street or cars coming and...
Is it in the downtown area?
No. I'll give like the...
Okay, okay.
I have some friends, on Fourth Street there, there is, right there going up to Academy, I guess that's Academy that goes up towards the school there.
Yeah, that's bad.
And nice, nice people, but there's a car that parks there. He's a younger kid, but I mean, it, it is almost head-on collision coming through there if you don't see somebody coming.
Are you talking about like LaComte in the area of...
Oh, is that LaComte?
Yeah, but if you're, if you're going...
On Fourth Street, right there.
Coming south, just before you get to LaComte, the little, like, orange car.
The parking is on Fourth Street?
You're right.
And it's his right to park there, but it really bottlenecks, and it becomes almost an issue.
Okay. Look at that and address that.
You're mayor.
Mayor, I had a few questions. People questioned me, what's going on with the Highway 61 tip? They never heard no more about it.
Right now, there hasn't been, but we can, we can get back on that if that's... I guess we need to talk about that, get into that.
There's process.
Yeah, right.
We gotta get, CMO would get involved, you know, in that.
And we can get, and with budget time coming up...
Yeah, let, let, it costs us, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to set up a tip, in terms of legal fees, and we gotta hire CMO to do the figures. So now's a good time to talk about it, because if we're gonna do it, we'll need to put it in next year's budget.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye. Proposed. Thank you.